Yeah. Is that why I white eyes about this TV stand?
Great.
No wonder.
Okay. Despite our technical difficulties, we are going to start the Corcoran Planning Commission meeting for April 7th, 2022. And we will now go to our roll call. And so Commissioner Jacobs here, Commissioner Brummond.
Here.
Commissioner Lanterman.
Here.
Commissioner Sherlock.
Here.
Commissioner Van den Nuyde.
Here.
All right. Everybody's in attendance. Thank you. All right. At this point, for those that would like, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks, everybody. We do have a very lengthy and busy schedule tonight. And so with that being said, we are going to, it doesn't look like there's a lot of us in the audience. I don't know how many might be online. But we are going to try to limit the, the public speaking opportunities to five minutes each. If you're, if you go past that, we can certainly allow more time, but just be cognizant that we're trying to not cut you off, but we're trying to keep a schedule because I anticipate we most likely will be here past 11:00, maybe midnight. So with that in mind, we will move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Does anybody have any changes to tonight's agenda? Now I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda say aye.
Aye.
All right. Agenda is approved. Okay. Open forum. Tonight's open forum, as always, is the opportunity for those in audience and those outside in cyber world to speak or to address the planning commission on any issue that is not already on the agenda. So at this moment, is there anybody in the audience that came here for open forum? Yes, sir.
I don't have an agenda. I don't know if it's on the agenda or not. How do we determine that?
What, what are you here to speak about?
I have some questions.
On?
The development that you, that you propose here.
Okay. Do you know which one that, I mean, it's?
The Wright-Hennepin substation or?
Northeast.
The northeast district. That is on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
That's the last item on the agenda.
So there's other?
Yes.
Yep.
And then there, the, the binder out there will have a copy of the agenda as well.
I think we'll get one. You bet.
It, there's not a copy of it, but you can definitely take a look at it. It's just there's a one copy for anyone interested.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, if there's anybody online that would like to participate in open forum, Natalie will give you the instructions to make yourself noticed.
Members of the public on Zoom, if you are on a mobile device or computer, please access the raise your hand function, usually located under the reactions menu. And those who are on the phone, I believe you'd want to press star nine to raise your hand. And Mr. Chair, I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay. We'll move on then to the minutes from March 3rd, 2022. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or corrections for the minutes? I do have one that might need just a little clarification.
Sure.
I think it was rather important. And that would be for the, that would be for the substation, Wright-Hennepin. So on page three, under Roman numeral four, Commission Discussion and Recommendation, we did talk about substations and residential zones, the use and process of eminent domain, and the ability of the applicant to apply for the preliminary plat prior to the completion of eminent domain. It goes on to say then that simply the motion was made by Lanterman, seconded, yada, yada, yada. I think it would be important, maybe just for the record, to show that, that this commission recommended denial because of that one specific reason. Does anybody agree with that?
I agree with that.
Okay. I mean, otherwise, it looks like there really wasn't any specific reason why the commission voted to deny. I think that's a, I think that's pretty important for the record. Anybody else? Okay. I'll have a motion to approve the minutes from March 3rd.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Okay. We'll get into the meat and potatoes of tonight's feast. We'll enter into our new business. Our first order of business is the, is item 6A, preliminary plat site plan and administrative permit for Corcoran II substation. Now, this particular item came back to this planning commission at the request of the city council. This is not a public hearing, and there is no resolution by which this commission will render a vote to?
I am so sorry to interrupt you, but we also, we have the public comment opportunity for anything that's not a public hearing before we get into Wright-Hennepin.
It wasn't that open forum?
No, the open forums are anything not on the agenda. And remember, we have a public comment opportunity before we, that, for anything that's not a public hearing that is on the agenda, prior to starting Wright-Hennepin.
So like if somebody wants to talk about item 6H, we're going to let them talk now, and then we'll try to remember it in four hours.
We can, that's what we have on the agenda, but we can definitely change it to each item if that's how you prefer to run the meeting. We can definitely do that.
Why don't we do it on each item?
Okay.
That's okay. All right. So, so the, the city council specifically referred this back to this planning commission with one sole purpose, and that sole purpose is to make a recommendation because in the process of denying the application, this commission did not render a full recommendation on issues related to screening and landscaping.
Recording in progress.
As such, the city council, who I am appreciative that values our input, wanted to seek that input before they made their final decision. Therefore, it ends up back to us today. Now, we as a commission and as a city are always very liberal in, in allowing our residents and interested parties to address, so we're not going to exclude anybody from discussing what's on their mind related to this substation. I would ask respectfully, though, there has been a lot of testimony, passionate, sincere, from residents and. As a result, we have to great lengths. And so we would appreciate that if it's something that has already been spoken to, that we limit that very, very closely to as short as time possible. Because again, this commission tonight is not to discuss or render an opinion as to whether or not this application should be approved or not. We are simply going to discuss issues related to screening and landscaping. So with that being said.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The, you are correct in that the packet that we have been provided, or that has been provided to us, does direct us to review the applic, the application exclusively on the limited issue of screening. However, in two emails and one phone call I had with the mayor, I was told that this commission's review tonight is not limited to screening. And in fact, when I went back and looked at the video of the city council meeting, that does not appear to be the direction. Now, I'm fine limiting it to screening, but I just want to note that that's not the direction that we've received, at least not what we've received from the mayor.
Okay. And, and I thank you for that clarification. Again, we've always been very liberal in allowing public comment and within the commission itself, debate on any issue and any questions. So I don't want to limit or cut anybody off in that. But to the endpoint, given our schedule, I, I would hope that we limit our comments and our discussion to try to focus on at least a consensus of what it is that we want to give to the city council. So with that being said, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the commission on item 6A? No? Is there anybody online? Again, Natalie will give you instructions to?
Anyone wanting to speak on the Wright-Hennepin substation online, please raise your hand. The computer or mobile devices will be able to access the raise your hand function under the reactions tab. And if you're on a phone, you should be able to raise your hand by hitting star nine. And no one is raising their hand at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. In the best interest of moving on, if, if somebody comes on late, please let us know.
Okay.
But at this point, then we will move on to staff report, please. And for those in the audience, I guess the only way you're going to be able to see this, you're going to all have to turn around your chair. The screen behind you on the wall, closest to the door, will have the presentation.
Mr. Chair, all of the, I would just say, just because we're having to have a couple of difficulties, all of the graphics were included in the original packet or a follow-up email that was sent to the commission and then amended on the online packet. But again, this is the Wright-Hennepin site on Larkin and 116. The planning commission, as you noted, did hold the public hearing on March 3rd and recommended denial. At the March 24th meeting, the council did direct it back to the planning commission. The screening discussion is related to how the site should be screened. Section 1060 dot 070 requires screening to provide a minimum of 80% opacity when screening is required. And screening should use natural topography where possible. In Corcoran, there's not a lot, but where possible. And then says it should use landscaping, fences, walls, or birmingham. To address that, the applicant's plan shows a seven-foot-tall chain-link fence with barbed wire at the top and plastic slats in the chain link to provide the screening. And then surrounding the site, 56 overstory trees and 62 shrubs. And this image is a site rendering provided by the applicant that shows the, some view sheds from Larkin Road on the top and from 116 on the bottom with just a chain-link fence. And again, I understand people here cannot read this, but hopefully the images that were in the packet, you can zoom in on at home and take a look at. So this is just the renderings with just a chain-link fence and landscaping. Staff does not believe this option complies with the code standard for 80% opacity. The second option is the current proposal from Wright-Hennepin, which is a chain-link fence, again, with the barbed wire on top with slats. This is not necessarily their fence here. This is just an example of a different site to give you some sense of what that looks like. And then again, the view sheds on the top from Larkin and from 116 on the bottom. Staff does believe that the combination of the slatted fence and vegetation does meet the 80% opacity. This was the staff recommendation in the March 3rd packet. And this is consistent with what we've required for other development in Corcoran historically, a combination of slatted chain-link fence and landscaping. The third option provided by the applicant in their packet is just a wall. I, I'm calling it a wall. It might be a plastic fence. This image here is actually a plastic fence, but a fence company provides it, but it feels like a wall, I think. And this example was something that was in your packet. This was from the website referenced in Councilmember Nichols' email that was included in the packet. That was some of the discussion at the council meeting. This would certainly provide 100% opacity for the ground equipment. The planning commission should discuss and provide a recommendation on screening for the site, and the evaluation should be based on the code standards. I put this in the staff report, so I won't review it, revisit it, excuse me. The council asks that the recommendation from tonight's planning commission be forwarded to them at next week's meeting, so this will be forwarded to the April 14th council meeting. In your packet, again, there were additional graphics. I didn't repeat all of them, thank goodness, since we can't see them, but happy to answer questions, Mr. Chair. The applicant is here as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Would, is there anybody that would like to start off for commission discussion recommendations or questions?
I would. Thank you. I received a letter at my home from a resident bringing to my attention that you, Kendra, were caught sharing an editorial commentary on a hot mic during our last meeting. During a break, and we can pull up the video if we have internet here, but at, starting at minute 46 and 30 seconds of part two of the May 3rd, 2022 meeting, but I can represent to you that in reference to me, you said, quote, "We did vet it," referring to this application. "We expected that and vetted it with our attorney, so I'm disappointed that our attorney, talking to Jess and I and me, sharing that with you, didn't carry as much weight as a commissioner who is not our city attorney." First, I do not know how you can expect any weight to be given to your representations about the city attorney's advice on this when you did not include any discussion of it in the last staff report. You claim that you preemptively addressed this issue, but I have a hard time believing you because the resolution that made its way to the council had to be modified to include a contingency that the application will only be approved provided that Wright-Hennepin secures title to the property. It seems to me that no one thought of this issue until it was discussed at our last meeting. I have no reason to think otherwise, again, because you did not include it in the packet for reasons unbeknownst to me. I also do not know why you believe you have the authority to withhold material from an application or to direct members of this commission on what we can or cannot discuss or consider. Our city code provides that, quote, "The planning commission shall recommend approval of the preliminary plat if it in all ways conforms to the city's comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, this chapter, and all chapters of the city code." I'm quoting from 930.010 sub 4D. "That language is intentionally broad and inherently means that there are no issues that are outside the scope of this commission's review. In the future, if you preempt an issue or consider an issue, it must be included in the packet. I do not know why, in this case, information about a conversation related to the application you allegedly had with the city attorney was not mentioned in our last packet." Second, your attempt to discredit my position at the last meeting is not only inappropriate, it is not well-supported because, one, like I mentioned, there was an effort after the fact to add new contingency language to a draft resolution presented to the council, and, two, this commission's authority is on an equal plane with the city attorney. Look at our city's organizational chart. I will not stand for any member of this commission being disparaged or ideas discounted because of the insinuation that they are not qualified. That is inappropriate. In the end, I ask that if you do have conversations with anyone that have any bearing on any issue in that you allege to have participated, please include it in your report. I would also remind you that your role is that of an advisor, not as an advocate for any applicant. Moving on, I can understand, and in fact, I, I even sympathize with Wright-Hennepin's frustration with this process and Wright-Hennepin's perhaps even feeling blindsided. It seems to me like they have worked with staff extensively on this application. I think that for such substantial applications, though, there needs to be oversight from the city council or perhaps from this commission at the outset, a dialogue, some communication even, so that an applicant, the, the city council and staff are all on the same page throughout the entire process. The fact is, what staff says is not gospel. They are not elected, nor are they appointed. So in that respect, I understand Wright-Hennepin's frustrations. With respect to the court's order, it seems that now some of the defect I highlighted previously has been cured and that title will be transferred to Wright-Hennepin if two things happen, and I'm quoting from the order. Title II and possession of owner's real property rights described in the petition and attached as Exhibit A shall vest in petitioner Wright-Hennepin on April 26, 2022, or the date on which petitioner deposits with the Hennepin County District Court Administrator or pays to the owner the amount of $489,230.77, whichever date is later. Because the later of the two dates has not occurred, I still think that this application is not properly before this commission tonight. But with the contingency and this order, it gives me some comfort. I said it at the last meeting, I think Wright-Hennepin now has the stronger position. They are in essential service, and I think that based upon my research, the law permits them to do as they propose. Now, if we're simply going to provide our insight on the types of screening, I'll turn it over to the other commissioners and provide my feedback on that as the discussion progresses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Let me kind of set this up in terms of the issue of screening and landscaping. Did you all get a chance to look at the wall? Okay. So basically, the wall was discussed because, and I, and I hold some belief in all of this, that, one, it does provide 100% screening, two, it might help abate the noise, and, three, it is more of a security type of fence. Now, we don't have a lot of threats and violence and everything else. I don't know who's going to be compelled to go put a high-powered rifle in there and shoot it all up, but there is that as an option. And, and through a request that I made to? Well, plastic or concrete?
Okay.
Yeah. I, I know that there's several different types of, of solid walls. We'll call it solid. But that's, that was what was brought up through some of Councilor Nichols' research. And then there were some additional items that were provided from the applicant themselves. Now, the, the other option is we go with the, the city standard, the, the chain-link fence, seven feet tall. Now, I don't believe originally that it was recommended that it be slatted, but that would be our, my suggestion to, and, and we should have that discussion if anybody disagrees with that. And I think that there are several good reasons why we should absolutely require it from this applicant. And it goes to the issue that has been talked about before, and that is with the landscape. Did you all see the picture that, that the applicant had sent regarding their Lawndale substation? Okay. Now, in a perfect world, we would all love to have the kind of natural screening that that facility does provide. However, that is not something that will be achieved at this substation, and here's why. One, that substation is generally four to six feet below the tree line, so it actually like sits in a hole. Nice spider here. And, and, and that may be caused either because of natural grade or it was because they burned it up. The second thing is, is that, and we talked about this in our first meeting, and that was related to the amount of space that the applicant has left for planting trees around the perimeter. And I know that I questioned it at our first public hearing, and I couldn't really get a definitive response as to why that was. But let's just, for the sake of simplicity, when you look at their landscape plan on L01, the trees on the west side, the north side, and the east side are all in a very linear line. I don't suppose there's any ability to get those screenshots up? Well, anyway, it, there's not, there's not.
I took them for you. Isn't that the next slide?
These?
Yep.
The Lawndale site? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, in specifically speaking to the Maple Grove, Lawndale site, okay, there, there they are. Now, the, the row of trees closest to you at the bottom, okay, that is the west side. And that, and that is fronting the road, Lawndale or Maple Grove Parkway. It's a busy road, just like 116 will be. It does have sidewalks and whatnot. On the right side is, that substation is adjacent to the Maple Grove Fire Department number five. And you can see that they have planted trees. Notice, some trees are bigger on the street side, on the west side, than they are on the north side. I don't know why. The south side of that site, you can see, has a lot of natural buffer that borders a pond and then actually wraps around, which is not visible here, but wraps around to the east side. So there's only three or four tree, there's four trees, I believe, planted on the south side. side, and there's a couple of trees planted on the east side. Now, in looking at that, and this is what seems apparent to me, unless something can be worked out, both of those, the north side and the west side, just like we would do with this here, we would be concerned about the screening naturally on the north side and the west side. The west side actually has three rows of trees. The two inside rows closest to the substation are pine trees. The outer row are the overstory trees. Now, here's some facts. Oh, and then, on the north side, there's two rows of trees, and those all are pines of some sort. So, in looking at that site, that site is 1.17 acres in size. The subject site is 2.87. So our site is more than twice the size. In terms of linear feet, that site, Lawndale, has 880 linear feet. Our Corcoran site has 1,000, well, it's actually more. There's 1,165 linear feet on the west, north, and east side. The south side would be comparable. I just didn't add it because I'm trying to get to a calculation. So we're talking with not as much perimeter and not as much size. On the Maple Grove site, on that north, on that north side, abutting the fire station, they have 26 trees planted in two rows, linear feet 252 feet. The distance between the first row and the second row is 12 feet. And I think that's important because as we look towards a solution for landscaping here, the first question is, does the applicant have 12 feet to give to do such a scattered pattern? And what they're doing is they're planting trees in one row so that each tree can grow to its full maximum without crowding out another one. And then the second row is used to bridge the gap in between those two trees. Simple, common sense stuff. So when you look at the ratio of trees per linear foot in Maple Grove on the north elevation, you get one tree per 9.7 feet, linear, 1 point, or 9.7 linear feet. The west side, and I'm going to just try to limit this just to the west side. So the west side, closest to the street, they have 12 pines and six overstory trees for a total of 18 in three rows. The depth of that tree row, from the front row to the back row, is 18 feet, and it spans 143 linear feet. So 18 trees spread over 143 linear feet ends up at one tree per 7.9 linear feet. Let's compare that then to our subject. On the west side, facing County Road 116, that site is 477 linear feet. We have scheduled, per their site diagram, 21 trees. That is one tree per 22.7 linear feet. The north side, and that's again all single row, the north side has 270 linear feet with 11 trees, which works out to be one tree per 24 and 1/2 feet. And if we throw in the east side to show consistency, that's 448 linear feet. It has 19 trees, which works out to one tree per 23.6 feet. Now, the applicant had sent this to say, this is a much better-looking thing, and I would agree. But given the fact that they can't double-row those trees, and given the fact that they are far below a tree count than what they've done in Maple Grove, I don't see a practical way where we're ever going to achieve that for our Corcoran site. And that would be, I guess, I mean, if you take that ratio, so if we were to apply nine, you know, eight tree per nine linear feet, just for the north and west side, at that, you'd have to have 83 trees to replicate what you've got in Maple Grove. Per our plan, they have 32, so there's a deficit of 51 trees. Now, I don't know why that is, and I don't know that it really matters. Our code is our code. We can recommend things like that, but maybe that's something that has to be changed in the future. But I just wanted to show you that, given what we're dealing with on this site, I think a resolution to this would be some kind of, kind of like we supposedly get benefits out of a PUD, you know? We're going to give you, you know, you guys want to do something at the bare minimum of what is required. Chain-link fence and the exact same number of trees that is required. No more, no less. Now, one of the things I noticed, and I've discussed this with Wright Hennepin, and we've discussed it amongst ourselves, I've always been a big advocate of, listen, why do we always have to plant four-foot pine trees that are take, you know, 10 years to 20 years to grow to its full maximum, when we can, you know, require maybe, say, a bigger tree, a spaded tree to get the bigger bang for the buck, right now, immediate? Now, given the comments that have come, both at our meeting, our open forum, and those comments that I witnessed at the city council meeting, we do have an obligation to consider things like sight, enjoyment, noise, and things like that. I don't know that we can address electromagnetic fields and everything like that. But to the best extent, I think we need to show that we at least gave it an attempt to address the issues that concern the members of our community and the future of what will be used for that land. So to that extent, the question again, would that be best served by a solid concrete wall? Which Wright Hennepin has suggested, if they are going to be required to do that, there would be no need for any landscape at all. And while I would certainly maybe disagree with that position, you know, that's maybe the trade-off that they'd have to get in order to make that work. So I'm wondering if, you know, when you look at the other sites, they also had a monument, you know, saying that this is the Maple Grove Lawndale Substation and their emblem, and it's got rocks and boulders and a big natural stone. They did it up in northern Corcoran, et cetera, et cetera. I did notice at our very first public hearing, on the first site that they had, that they didn't put that in, and I was told that, well, we just don't do that anymore. But in my discussions and trying to find maybe a happy medium, I suggested that maybe the solution here would be to put up the chain-link fence, put the slats in, and then for trees, go with, go with a selection, I don't know if it's 100% or a combination, you know, a certain percentage of them, maybe different types, but go with the biggest tree that they can fit in there, which would be a spaded tree. So get the biggest bang for the buck that we can. The slats, I think, will help certainly with the visual. I do believe it'll help with sound. Will it be as good as a solid wall? I don't know. You know, I'm not that technical. And then as a boost to show that, you know, we're not, we are not going to just, you know, suggest to the city council that we're going to do the minimum, you know, put up a nice entry monument. Give us the bigger trees, give us some good screening through the fence, and to the extent that you can work with staff to determine whether or not there's any possibility of getting the trees out of a pure linear line, you know? Because I don't know why they're not closer to the fence or whatnot. There's got to be some sort of reason, because they're professional landscapers, certainly didn't put them that way. But I think that there's a better way to do it, and those would be the suggestions that I would have. So with that being said, your comments and questions to me, staff, the applicant, what's your thoughts on this issue? Stone wall or chain-link fence and bigger trees? Yes, sir?
So where is the idea of a concrete wall coming from? Wright Hennepin doesn't want to do that, correct?
No, that was a, that was a comment that was made by, I don't remember, it was made by, yeah, Councilor Varancamp. And then, when they asked, and they suggested it come back to the planning commission, they asked for my comment, I said, sure. I was actually going to pass a note to the council to say, why, maybe consider a block wall, but he beat me to it. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chair, if I may, thank you for asking. My frustration and the reason I brought up that idea, only an idea, was related to, it is going in a very visible place in our county. And I, as Commissioner Chair Jacob says, waiting for the trees to grow those kind of things, my frustration came up, and I should be, have a little thicker skin, but I'm not crazy about chain-link and plastic slats. I'm just not. Is there, and I think if I say it right, is there a way that we maybe not have to do a burrow, zero wall up there? Noise panels along the interstate? I was just spitballing, brainstorming, whatever, on something better than chain-link and a slotted fence. And it's turned into this. I did not say concrete. I said, you drive down 494, 694 now, they've even got the big maple leaves in the concrete walls and stuff. Some type of sound barrier. I completely understand the decibel thing. This is, the hum of the, the hum of the transformers is slightly above our conversation right now. So 100 feet away, would you hear us talking? No. I understand the decibels. I understand all of the things that are here. I just want something that's more appealing to the eye than chain-link. Chair's, Chair's comment about spaded trees, those kind of things, all of that stuff, I received the same email from Wright Hennepin about putting up concrete. What if we've got problems underground and stuff? That immediately got me to the point, is there a way where they can put a fence over those feeder lines and stuff that could collapse, retract, so they could do their service, those kind of, that's all stuff I would talk to the council. I just, I wanted, I'm the one, blame me for this, for you going that long, I'm a big guy, I can shoulder it. I just want something better than...
I hear you, and I agree with you aesthetically, but I will mention, though, that our city code specifically states that the city, quote, "prefers natural screening." So I don't know why we would expect Wright Hennepin to deviate from this and build something that's not called for. To me, it just seems unfair that we have this code out there, we have applicants spending money, planning projects based on the code, only to come here and get holes poked in it.
Again, my conversation, Mark, Commissioner Landerman, was, again, the frustration of the community, everything that's going on.
Oh, I share that with you.
You're going to eat this, you're going to whatever, and the thing in my mind, I asked staff and stuff, could we request more? And they take a comment back, we can request, but our ordinance says this.
Right.
So I'm trying to, if I can, smooth over, and whatever happened the last meeting for you guys and stuff, that's all resolved. We know the outcome, we know things like that. I wanted to come back to the planning commission. If there was a way, and I'm hoping, and I'm believing that Wright Hennepin is listening, y'all have spent some time, Chair Jacob, sounds like he has, I just, I wanted to look really, really good right from the start, not wait 20 years to grow. That's just me, and if I'm asking too much, somebody just tell me you're not Steve. That's me. So you've all made great comments tonight. Commissioner Landerman, great, and I'm glad you guys have set the record straight and stuff. I just, I did not want it to come to the council and not have your guys' input on screening in this discussion that we're having now. I just, I was on the planning commission, and I didn't like the council got it, and it's just, we didn't let our volunteers do or recommend or make suggestions, those kind of things. Again, I hope everybody's listening, so thank you. Very much.
And Chairman, is there a reason why the trees are being spread out? You covered a lot of important points, and I can only think so fast. Is there a reason why you threw out, what was it, at one site, it was one tree every nine feet?
That's Maple Grove.
And Maple Grove. So every nine feet, one tree. What is the ratio being proposed at this site?
They're one in 23, 24 feet.
Okay. So less than half the density. And is there some logistical hardship, or is it just that we don't want to pay for our trees?
That's just what our code says. They did, our code, and I can't quite figure it out, our code says one tree or overstory tree per 50 linear feet of perimeter.
I highly doubt we would be expecting something to be completely shielded, which is really what we want here.
Well, not at, not at one per 50 feet.
Yeah, yeah, we would, that would never shield, but here we're looking for a complete shield. I mean, this Maple Grove one, you can't even see it.
Yeah.
It doesn't...
But our code says one for every 50 feet.
Yeah, but, but that's why I can't figure out, how do we get one per 24? That's, that'd be like saying, well, the applicant added twice as many of what was required. Is there an answer for that? Or any kind of...
Yeah, I wasn't sure I was quite following your math, but the numbers in, that you said 52 overstory trees is what our code requires based on the perimeter of the site. And so I'm not sure how that other math worked to get one per, but they are...
Well, I just, I just added up the trees on each side.
So they've added some additional trees. A lot of the things on the plan are shrubs to fill in between the trees?
I did not do the south side just because of the shrubs.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, that, that south side, the way that's landscaped, is not unique to any, any site that I've seen that belongs to Wright Hennepin. So I just like, that's so off the wall, I didn't even, I can't factor that in. I was just looking at, if you take the two most important sides to screen in Corcoran and Maple Grove, it's very obvious. We, they got one tree per 24 feet, and Maple Grove's got one per nine. And it should be noted, that from the fence to the tree line, you know, there's like 50 feet. I mean, there's 50, 60 feet. I mean, they've got, they've got a lot of space around it. Now, between the fence and the property line, if you look at this, there's 50 feet. And yet I can't figure out an explanation as to why their architect went and put all those trees. But again, without more density to cover the gap, when you look at their renditions, you can clearly see right through it.
Oh, yeah.
There's big spaces to go right to the, go right to the fence.
Yeah.
And why is that? Because they have a single linear line of trees, they don't have a second row to fill the gap. They need twice as many trees to do that. So if they can double-row those, it's not a lack of the site's too small, but it's just that our code doesn't, for somehow, for some reason, and maybe this is something they can work out with staff, maybe we don't need all those bushes, maybe we should convert some of those into some more trees, albeit maybe even smaller ones.
Yeah, I don't know how critical Lark, sorry, I was thinking how critical is Lark in compared to 116, from a visual. I don't know if that came up in the council meeting, but... I don't know if that came up in the council meeting, but.
I don't.
Not really.
How tall is this structure? Did I read it's like 60 feet or how big, how big is this going to be? Isn't it, I thought I read that it's like 60 feet tall. Am I misreading something?
There's approximately six or eight holes that are 60 feet tall. The rest of the structures are building height eight to 10, 10 maybe 12 feet at max.
Oh, okay. So the majority of it is what I'll call kind of normal and then some of it goes 60.
Yeah, some parts work that extends above the fence level.
Okay.
And you will visually see that. I mean, if we didn't have any screening at all, you'd probably see that above the fence.
Okay, okay. That's helpful because here, I'm wondering, why are we talking about this if this stuff is 60 feet high? It's like spitting in the wind putting some bushes in front of it, you know? But you're telling me the majority of it is like a one and a half story with just a couple of things sticking out? Okay, all right.
Kendra was raising her answer. I didn't know if she was going to answer one of your questions, but then I have a comment too.
I can answer one of your questions.
Okay.
You asked why there's not a double row on the west side where there's, where it looks like there's a lot of space between.
Yep.
If you look at the landscape plan, you can see the stormwater pipe that runs through. So we.
Is that the dotted line with the arrows?
Yes, the little arrows. And so our engineers do not allow landscaping in that drainage easement.
Can that be moved?
It really can.
Can it be rerouted?
I think that's one of the differences between this site and the Maple Grove site. I don't know that that was built with a stormwater pond on site.
Well, there's a pond right next to it. So my guess would be if they can drain the site, but I don't know what kind of environmental concerns that would be. But, you know, I tend to find a lot of our drainage issues in our ponding to be quite curious as it relates to their abilities to do site planning because of this requirement.
So I just wanted to note that the distance between where the trees are shown and the fence is a clear zone per engineering. Now, whether the council would want to allow landscaping on the city park property to accomplish that, I don't know, but I don't think there's room to do a lot more staggering than what they've got.
Well, I did have a discussion with Mrs. Sandberg about that. I was quite surprised that, to hear that the city would not allow them to do berming on that side because it would fall over into the city space. Now, I don't see what exactly is going to be used in that city space, but I would think that any kind of, you know, if you're going to have a trail, because that is kind of a downhill slope, I would think it'd be more closer to the road. But when is, when is any kind of, you know, landscaping changes in contour a bad thing? Whether it comes from Wright Hennepin or residential thing? I mean, I could see, you know, certainly we don't want to go on halfway into the site, but if we're talking a couple of feet and the difference is, well, yeah, they can build a berm four feet tall and put these trees in, or they can't build anything at all. I think I had air towards allowing them to build a berm that would filter and be, you know, contoured into the future part. Because again, when you look at Maple Grove, there's a four to five, six foot difference between where their trees are planted at ground level and where their pad is for the station. And, you know, if you're talking a four or five foot advantage, when we're talking about trees originally being planted per our code, they're only four to six feet tall.
Mr. Chair, who said that the city is not willing to do that?
It's in the code.
No, no, no. I thought you asked about it and someone said, yeah, the city can't do that.
Well, because it's in the code.
No, the staff can't approve that, the council can. The parks director did not think the parks commission was supportive of that idea, but certainly the council could allow the applicant to berm and plant on city property. It limits how the city can use its land in the future. I think is why the parks coordinator did not, said that the park commission did not like that idea, but the council certainly can. The code would not prohibit someone from planting on our property. If a Boy Scout wanted to do it, we could let them, for example, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would suggest making that recommendation to the city council. I think that that was a creative solution and it should be brought to council. And, you know, if our code doesn't, you know, we make changes to the code all the time. But if our code doesn't prevent that and if this commission thinks it's a good idea, which I do, I think that that was a good idea, then I do think that we should bring that recommendation to council. It's their decision to make.
Okay. Well, I mean, listen, if, obviously, I don't know that we, I mean, we can make all that. I think ultimately where this ends up in is further discussions with, between Wright Hennepin, their architects and the city staff. And I guess I, since this is going to go before the city council next week, some people are going to have, you know, city council could just simply say, we'll allow it. And especially if that's all that's needed to give them a little bit more space to do a double row. Problem with that is allowing for that open space isn't going to do any good unless you come up with more trees.
Right. For the folks at Wright Hennepin, you know, we're trying to kind of come to some, you know, as reasonable as possible solution. If the city council were to allow that, what is it, is it a berm that you were describing? Would you consider coughing up for some additional trees there?
Yeah, I think we're willing to work with the city. And we communicated this to the chairman is that that's our preferred path, right? Is work with the city to develop a landscaping plan that meets your expectations and criteria. And we're definitely willing to, or if staff work with this commission to achieve that.
Okay. Could I ask you just one more kind of question? In your, I was here last month for your presentation and in your presentation, you stated that Wright Hennepin approached 10 property owners and that none of them were willing to sell. And then at the city council meeting, you brought up the same slide. Are you willing to give me the addresses and names of those 10 property owners?
I can answer that question.
Okay.
I'm legal counsel for Wright Hennepin. I made those calls, but I'm not at liberty to divulge the names or addresses or phone numbers or any kind of.
So is it your, you were, you went to St. Thomas Law, right?
I did.
Okay, were you my student?
Not by knowledge.
All right, maybe we'll change that. Is it your position then that when you make a representation in a public meeting, that you don't have to share the details so that we can determine the candor of the application?
Well, I would say.
What's so secret about this?
Well, I think it's a business decision and negotiations that were.
I don't care about the negotiations. I just want to know the addresses.
Okay. At this point, I'm not comfortable sharing that information.
Hmm. And the reason is?
I think it's confidential.
Just because?
I think it's confidential business information.
Okay, based on what?
Based on my experience, based on our ethical rules, since you are very familiar.
I know, I'm on the lawyer's professional responsibility board, so, okay. All right, so it's your, this is just confidential, you're going to throw it out in a public meeting and then not disclose the details?
Well, as you know, Commissioner Landerman, I cannot misrepresent any facts, whether that's in a public forum or privately. So I can, all I can tell you is that I did make those calls, but I'm not in a position to divulge the details.
Okay. I just want to mention, because I'm trying to actually help you on this, okay? But I just think that the optics of coming into a town and, you know, not being transparent doesn't help Wright Hennepin's reputation.
I see.
Okay, just know that.
So may I share a few thoughts?
Yes, Commissioner Drummond.
I am in agreement that just because of the particular location, which I know, you know, for the past number of years has been planned to just kind of be the city downtown area. And with the idea of a linear walking path, I just feel like something that will help soften the edges and screen more completely is desirable for all the residents. I feel like it would do, it would go a long way to just show an added effort, you know, to work with, within the restrictions of the site. Some thoughts that I had that I'm throwing out there is regardless of what type of fence, if we do a chain link, if we do the complete solid wall, is it possible to use climbers and creepers as a landscaping tool that go up the edges of whatever, you know, whatever it is that screens it to soften the edges? That gives a lot of hanging green space. It takes away from some of the like, the sharpness maybe of the barbed wire. So I'm talking like, it's flowers, right? Like you've got clematises and morning glories and beans and peas if you wanted to. But there are a lot of plants that could be planted right at the base of the perimeter. I don't know how that impacts the other side of the wall, if that would cause any kind of concern about overgrowth or what have you. But maybe something that could be easily maintained, but then would also look really pretty as you're walking up and down that walkway. And then I was just going to speak to color, if I could, and that was, whatever color you do, there was like a small building that was going to be on there. And then also the color consideration of whatever type of material is used to screen or not screen. I would just try to steer away from the grays. I think it just, considering the feeling, kind of going into the scenario, to do gray, I think would be a really bad choice. It kind of evokes a prison, right, or depressing kind of emotion, I think even subconsciously. So I would go into your gray tones, I would do your more natural tones. That would just be my recommendation to, again, soften some of the hard edges, especially if they have barbed wire. I would love, I mean, I think like a solid wall would be beautiful, especially if you landscaped it well, it could be a real architectural feature in that area. So, but again, I know that there are some constraints around whether that's possible or not. So I'll take whatever kind of screening we can get, but those were just some added thoughts that I had.
Okay, thank you. Question, who do we normally rely on for colors? I don't think you want to trust me with a color wheel.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you know, it's not something that we deal with a lot. I asked my registered landscape architects, their team proposed a beige. I asked my registered landscape architect, same, I'm not the color person. He recommended brown, which is what I said in the staff report, just because greens are usually a very unnatural green. Gray, again, is a.
Well, I mean, brown for slat seems to be, because that's what West Side Tider is proposing.
That tends to fade into the background, particularly with the amount of vegetation proposed, was his opinion.
Okay, all right.
But when you say brown, there's like a whole gamut of browns, right? Like it's not brown necessarily, but like a brown tone, you could do, like a beige is a brown tone, just warmer.
Well, I just want to clarify, we, again, trying to move on.
Yes.
If you got a color preference, raise your hand and let the council know. But I don't know that, I don't know that I want to spend a whole lot of time trying to do this. I think if we just say slats, color to be determined, does that usually come from you? Does it come from the applicant?
We usually work with our landscape architects and the city staff and then with their design team, so.
Okay.
We can certainly do that. The draft resolution that went to the council last week said, exactly as you said, color to be determined.
Okay. Does anybody have a preference that they really want to impress upon the city council? Otherwise, we'll let the color discussion go to the wayside.
I just have a question about the building though. More about, I know we have recommendations on, I mean, even when we're talking about the Northeast District, there's these recommendations of styles and different things. Is this, does this need to comply with that or is it, can it just be a structure with a metal roof and done? Or does it still need to comply with some of the architectural things, if it's facing the road and things like that, that we have in our other recommendations?
Well, I mean, they provided this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but I'm looking at the stuff we look at for the Northeast District, Southeast District, we have, you can't just build a square building if it's facing a road and it needs, you know, we do this for the houses. If they are facing a house, they have to have extra architectural things, I'm sorry, if they're facing a road, they have to have other architectural dimensions to make it look nicer. I just don't know if we have requirements for this or can they just build a concrete block structure, throw a metal roof on it and call it a day? Or does they still have to comply with some of those other, those other things that we are, we've been talking about?
Mr. Chair, they do have to comply with the standards in the code. The Northeast, excuse me, the Southeast District standards are more for residential property. So as we said last month, we believe that this building does comply, but that for the same reason you have discretion on the fence, you have some discretion on the building itself.
Okay.
But we believe it does comply with the standards in 1060, which does allow this type, even in the Southeast District, because it's not a home, it's an essential service.
So we won't have record, sorry, this is a different topic then. Yeah, and so I'll just throw my voice in. I like the idea, I thought it seemed odd that we just had this dead space, I guess that was our park space. Seems like that would be a great use for just the concerns residents have brought up visually to have, to use that public space to build that up and then have, I think what we're suggesting is putting, you're suggesting is putting the trees on top of a berm and now at that point, even if they're hopefully spaded, even if they're not, we're already, we already got, we're already starting somewhere.
Well, I think because we have a lack of trees to cover the area adequately, I think it ought to be mandatory that some of them or all of them, at least up to the ones that were required. We can even break it down to just the ones on the east side and the north side. Because those are the two sides that really we want to make sure that we don't miss both. The east side is important because something will eventually be built on the east side, but that property will have their own ability to do their own screening. So I don't know that we need to heap that all up on Wright Hennepin. I'd rather concentrate any effort that they're willing to go over and above on those areas that are most important to what's going to happen and where it's going to be most visible by the residents of the city. And that would be the west side and the north side. And again, not to say that the south side isn't important, but because of the power lines, that's why there's no trees there. That's why they're mostly shrubs. Well, there will be shrubs there, but we're not going to, we're not talking 50-foot trees.
So ideally, are you thinking that, are you looking to get the same density as what they've done at, where is it, Maple?
Maple Grove.
Maple Grove?
Let's just say, let's see if they can work to something that gets closer. You know, again, this is very evident, there's gaps.
Right.
And this is a rendition where the trees, these are not newly planted trees, this is 10 years in the future. And it doesn't do the job like it does in Maple Grove. So if we all look at Maple Grove and say, God, that, you know, that really is nice. And that would work.
In 10 years.
10, 15 years. But how do we get there fast enough and how do we make sure that we get that kind of coverage? It requires bigger trees and it requires a few more trees. Do they all have to be spaded? No. So whatever could be worked out, and this will be probably a balance between the architect, you know, there, you know, I don't know, I mean, I've done, most of my trees on my property, to the extent of about 80 of them have been spaded in, because I wanted the instant, you know, I wanted this to, I didn't want to wait my whole life to see, and I never had one die.
Right.
But I do know that spacing is an issue. So depending upon how much room they get, depending upon how much space, would, might determine how many of those things can be spaded, trees, what species are better to be spaded. And to make up that difference, we can just go with the standard six foot. They'll get there eventually, but at least in the interim, there's something there. It's better than nothing.
So are you guys, hey, I'm sorry, quick question.
Yes.
We were just talking about the density of the trees at Maple. We were just talking about the density of the trees at Maple Grove. Are you guys willing to bring your plan up to the same density?
So I think where we're at is, to that point, is we've addressed the design we've had in place, when above and beyond your initial goal, as you guys like.
Right, yep, yep, I get that.
So now we'll have to revisit it and look at what options we have. We're totally in favor of working with the city, especially with addressing the burning on that west side, working in the linear pathway, doing a double standard tree, trying to fill up those gaps. Don't have an answer, right, because we're working through this right at the present time. So that'll have to be something we will work through the next week.
But, but in good faith, you'd be willing to at least visit that?
Most definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, and so I think right now, tonight, if, if we can come to a general consensus that we think that the, the city council and, and the staff should, you know, they're willing to do some spaded trees, what percentage, which ones, I don't know. They're willing to berm. If, if the city council's willing to allow that berm to go on to the public space, good. If that gives them more room, at least on the, on the west side, to double up trees, then somebody, we got to figure out where those trees come from, you know. And then they're willing to put up a, a nice decorative monument sign. Now where that goes, I don't know, I suppose maybe the best site might be on the south side. But if it goes up on the, you know, in the corner over here by, down here in the, in the southwest corner, it doesn't look like there's any trees, you know, maybe...
And what's that sign for?
That's what he's, wants them to put up, it just indicates that it is a, like a Wright Hennepin substation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's decorative.
It's not like, welcome to our substation playground.
No, no.
On public land.
But, but when I toured, when I toured them all, they all had these.
So it's a sign saying this is a Wright Hennepin substation?
Yeah, but I was impressed with it, I thought that was really cool.
Okay.
And then I was surprised that Corcoran didn't have one, so when I asked them if they'd be interested in...
Well, we want our sign.
And they're, and they're willing to do that, so there's some give and take, but this is nothing, we can't come up with specifics, but if they're willing to in good faith, you know, again, we'll give them the chain link fence, they'll do the slats, and they can work out the tree counts, the tree size, the berms, and everything else. That would be our recommendation then to the city council.
How many projects of this size have you had here in Corcoran? Is this, what, I guess, is this the first or second?
In Corcoran, direct, I think it's the first one.
Is it? Okay, okay, yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, thank you. Let me ask you, would the process had been easier if there was better communication between Wright Hennepin, the, the landowner, city council, perhaps the planning commission? Do you think that, for this specific application, do you think that communication went well, or do you think it was frustrating? I'm, I'm just curious for your feedback.
I don't know if I want to step into that, but I'll be honest, you know, but there's always improvements to be made, right? From a standpoint of process improvements, how we work through this. Getting opinions, getting insight from council members, from commissioners at the front end, because we're at a point now, we've designed a substation, laid it all out, set up based off of code, based off of input from city staff, and making changes at the last minute. We have to ask ourselves, we have issues, it's not just aesthetic, right? We literally want to look at something just aesthetic, we have to address safety, operations, reliability, those are the things that drive our decision making. And so, understanding what your expectations are, what the council's expectations are, of course, all that on the front end is going to be much more helpful as you craft and create something that, when you get to the later stages, is more just fine tuning. Versus trying to make significant adjustments or address major concerns.
At the last minute.
At the last minute, which, which in this sense you can't do.
Right.
Because it's designed already for a specific layout of specific perimeter structure. And so, yes, to answer your question, yes, it would definitely be. Is it frustrating? Yeah, of course, I'm sure it's frustrating for everyone involved, and if we can avoid that going forward, that's, that's a benefit for everyone.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Sandberg? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sandberg. Councilor Van Camp.
Yes.
Do you think that we have provided enough input for the city council to go ahead and, based upon, based upon what staff will put together in a week to evaluate that for your next meeting, or is there anything we maybe have left out?
You've satisfied me. Again, I was brainstorming on something better, something that looked good. You've gone the other direction with larger trees, a whole bunch. I heard Wright Hennepin say they're willing to do that, and I hope that doesn't include a redesign. I think we all can communicate better, staff to council, council especially to staff, is, is some of the things that I've seen that can be done a lot better, but I think we've got a pretty good council now. We've all talked about revisiting our ordinances and those kind of things, and they really shaped this stuff. Again, kind of the whole beginning of this being derailed with Commissioner Landerman's concerns originally, as far as is, are the i's dotted and t's crossed on representation of the property? That could have been done better, people should have known more that day, so didn't drag out this far. A lot of people not wanting this, those kind of things. I think a lot of, a lot of players in this just didn't want to communicate, didn't want to do this, those kind of things. And I don't think any intent on the city's side was to defame Wright Hennepin or the current landowner, the previous landowner, however we're going to say that. I just, everything could have been done way better than this. And then my last thing is, I want to make sure Wright Hennepin and the city, our staff, has a plan moving forward for future substations, if needed, without using eminent domain. I just, I hate those two words, I, I can't say aloud enough. When I, when I spoke about being neighborly, Corcoran neighbors and those kind of things, if I'm out of line, please tell me, but buy the whole piece of property, not just take five acres. And then you own it, those kind of things, I've said that to the general public in the past, of we don't want to live next to more development, we moved to the edge of town to live next to cornfields and stuff, and I told that group, buy the cornfield, and I'm sure we can find a farmer to do it. Same as this, if Wright Hennepin's going to do something like this instead of taking that, I think things would have been better, that piece property would be for sale, there was a price on it, get it, get it done, and then be part of the community, help us develop a downtown, help us put in a substation, and I think it would have went a lot better, a lot easier. I'll stop at that.
Okay, so we've...
Thank you.
I think you've done everything, you did...
The only, the only thing we didn't address is that road access. In my discussions with Wright Hennepin, they don't care.
Yeah.
If it works out in the future that, hey, you're going to take, you know, off that ghost road, let it be. It's probably so far down the road, we might end up being on the commission, and not that it doesn't matter, but no one can guarantee that's going to happen. They're comfortable doing either way. So I don't think we need to make that an issue, but I know that that was one of the...
Mr. Chair, I hope you appreciate, again, I'm, I was the one that said I'd like to send it back to the planning commission to get this, because we didn't get this input.
Yep.
So, thank you so much.
And we appreciated the opportunity, so, good, thank you. So, is there anything that you think we haven't addressed or given clarity to before we move on to our next item?
No, I think the message, I'll just repeat it to make sure it's accurate, that the planning commission's recommendation is that the Wright Hennepin work with the city council to consider a berm that straddles the city Wright Hennepin property line in order to create a berm with a double row of plantings on that west side. The site should have a chain link fence with slats. The site should include a monument sign with landscaping, and that the applicant should work to include larger trees, some of which should be spaded if possible.
And again, I would, in all of that, I would emphasize the west side, the north side. I mean, again, if there's going to be concessions, let's concentrate on those sides that are most important, and, and to a lesser extent than the east side.
So a double row of trees on both the north and the west?
To the extent you can fit them in there. If, if, if putting the berm in on the west side allows enough room for them to do that, then let's work to that, to that end, and figure out how to get additional trees. If you can't do that on the north side, well then alls we have is the bigger trees. I mean, so, you know, I, I think, again, you know, like Van Camp, we, we just want this thing to look as best as it can. And given all of the concerns and, and whatnot that the, that the residents had, I, I think this is the best way we can address at least two of the most significant, the site and the sound.
So would that change to add the north? That's accurate for the commission?
If, if it can.
Okay.
I'm hearing that west side is like, first priority, second priority, and the east side.
Correct.
Yep. And again, if you look at their Maple Grove site, where did they put all their effort in their biggest trees? They put them along Maple Grove or Longdale. And to a lesser extent, the, but I suppose, why would you have to concern yourself with the north side that much? Because it was, it was a, a fire station. So, it's not like you have residents over there who are going to complain about it.
Yes, sir. I could, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Sweene. I know it's not the outcome that you and your family want, but I hope you know that this commission, this commission at least, looked at this issue very carefully for you.
I appreciate that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question on timing? As we work through this, is this, I know usually staff, you have a packet that goes out to council, and is this going in front of the council next Thursday?
Yes, I will be writing a packet at whatever time this meeting gets done tonight, so that it can go out tomorrow morning in the council packet for next Thursday, the 14th. So it will not be resolved, but the recommendation will be forwarded to the council.
Okay, so we'll be able to work with you and then deliver it to the council Friday?
Yeah, and I think honestly, just frankly, I think it probably makes sense because it's city land to, to look at conceptually what would it look like if the council approved it, rather than fully redoing the plan set, so that they can decide, are they comfortable with that?
Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, well, that wasn't the half hour I thought it would be, but we've struggled through it, all of us, and, and thank you, everybody, for your time. All right, let's move on to item 6B. This is a public hearing, this is for the West Side Tire Variants, SP and IUP. And so we will start with the staff report, and that TV isn't going to work, is it?
Mr. Chair, our interim city administrator, it sounds like she spoke with IT personnel as well, and she's not, there seems to be a power issue, and it's not going to get resolved tonight, so.
A power issue?
Something, seems to be a power issue, she was trying to work within here while we were discussing.
Get those guys from Wright Hennepin back in.
She checked the breakers, and it doesn't look like that's solving the issue, and she's not sure why the HDMI isn't working, but, yeah, it's not going to get resolved tonight, is the bottom line, and she apologizes, and we're just going to make do with what we have.
So I'll be showing this on that screen, if you guys can't see it in the back row, you might want to move up.
Feel free to move the chairs as you see them, as I was going to say, you can turn them around if you'd like.
Yeah, it's nothing you haven't, from you, so. Okay, Mr. Chair, are you ready?
Yes, absolutely, please.
This is the West Side Tire site that we're talking about, is the site on the south side of 75th. West Side Tire actually operates on the north side of 175th, excuse me, of 75th. The piece that has the request for the site plan, variance as an interim use permit, is the southern property. The original West Side Tire was approved in 1988 and has been a Corcoran business since then, growing over that time period at the 19925 75th Avenue site. And when it was originally approved, no outside storage was allowed, that was part of that original resolution, but over the years, outside storage began to occur on the site, and then eventually spread to the subject property at 19950 75th Avenue. And so the city and the applicant or the landowner have been working for a number of years to solve the code issues on both properties, and through that effort, the city council asked the applicant to apply for an ordinance amendment. You saw that in March of last year, or April, February of last year. And in March, on March 11th of last year, the city council approved an ordinance amendment that allows outside parking and outside storage as a principal use and established conditions for them. This was a request from West Side Tire and specifically drafted to address the issues on this site. So the applicant's been working to get the plans done and is now submitting under those new, new standards. So the request is approval of a site plan, an interim use permit, two interim use permits, and two variances on 19950 75th, that's the southern property. The approvals would create a paved parking area on that parcel for employee parking and vehicles to be serviced. It would create a gravel unloading area for heavy equipment. It would create a screened outside storage area so that all outside storage could be enclosed and screened. And in order to accomplish that, they're requesting a variance from the 50-foot minimum front yard parking setback, and a variance from the 32-foot maximum curb cut. So I'm going to quickly walk through all of those, the full analysis is in the staff report, but in light of the meeting agenda, I'll be fairly brief. So this is the site plan submitted by the applicant, and again, west side is on the north side of 75th, this is on the south side, this dark gray is the paved parking area, this is the gravel vehicle unloading area, which would be intended for heavy equipment, I'm pointing in the upper right-hand corner of the site. And then in the back, there's a fenced area, and this pink line is the existing gravel area, and that's important because the intent is to limit the impervious surface to what's on site today, to avoid stormwater permit requirements. So the site plan originally for West Side Tire, in the city files at least, showed 33 parking stalls on that parcel. This was in your packet, this was the original approval with additions over the years. The applicant's plan, which was submitted, indicates, based on the city code formula, that 54 parking stalls are required by the code for this business across both sites. As I noted in the staff report, I think we need a little more data to confirm the calculation. We don't have a site plan that shows the square footages. I want to make sure that they've deducted the 10% that our code allows in order to come up with that calculation, it might be slightly less required under the code. The current plan shows 20 parking stalls on the west side property, which is up here. And again, I know it's impossible to read up there, but this is in your packet, and then 34 stalls on the south lot. I noted in the staff report a couple of things, they do need to provide accessible parking stalls on the north lot per the code, that number varies depending on the exact number of parking stalls, with 54 stalls, it does require three accessible, ADA accessible stalls. The parking does not meet the 26-foot minimum drive aisle requirements, or a code requires a 26-foot wide drive aisle so that cars can pass both directions. So these two parking stalls on the north side do not have space to provide that, they would need to be removed. And there's six stalls on the south side here that do not provide that 26-foot drive aisle and would need to be removed. Alternatively, to meet that, you could pull the parking further south. Unfortunately, what that would do is either shrink the storage area or re... Unfortunately, what that would do is either shrink the storage area or require the storage area to be moved further south, which the applicant has indicated that they don't want to do. So the code does say, "Subject to the review and processing of an interim use permit, the city may reduce the number of required off-street parking spaces when the use can demonstrate documented, a documented demand which is less than required." So I don't have that from the applicant. I know they, you've probably seen the site, they do have a lot of parking on-site. They feel like they need these parking stalls, but if they can't make it fit and comply with the code, there is an option for the city to allow fewer parking stalls. In this case, based on what the plans show, they'd need to eliminate eight parking stalls, which would bring them down to 46 parking stalls, and the city could approve that. I suspect the applicant may have something to say about that because I know they feel like they need the 54 that they're showing, so there's a couple of ways to address the issue. There is no landscaping shown on the plans. We just spent quite a bit of time talking about landscaping requirements. The code does historically require that mix of fence and landscaping. They are proposing a seven-foot tall chain link fence with slats. We are recommending that the fence be added on the west side of the storage lot to enclose that storage area without enclosing the storage area. It has a tendency to expand. We also recommend that they shift the east fence, which is shown kind of out in the access drive, shift it east to the edge of the parking lot, and then that gravel area there can be reclaimed, made into turf, and then that hard surface can be in that outside storage area, which will expand that outside storage area without triggering the stormwater permit. The code would require, using the same perimeter measure we just talked about with Wright-Hennepin, would require 21 trees and 34 shrubs on this site. We would recommend that those, that landscaping be added. That's in the draft resolution. We're suggesting that it be provided focused on the north, east, and west, less screening on the south because there is existing vegetation on the south. But the commission should talk about that. Similar discussion as our last agenda item. The interim use permit for parking and outside storage, I'm not going to go through all of the conditions, those are in your staff report, but do note the couple of conditions that are not being met. Staff has included conditions in the draft resolution to try to address them, including enclosing the entire outside storage area, moving the fence to the edge of the parking lot, which allows that outside storage area gravel to expand, adding the landscaping, relabeling the area called temporary equipment storage as unloading zone only. It's not for storage, it's just to unload those heavy equipment. Requiring that all outside storage be removed from the West Side Tire site and stored in the fenced area, that the 26-foot wide drive aisles be provided, and that the gravel areas be removed from the access easement on the east and restored. The variances, there are two variances. The request for the 35-foot setback where 50 feet is required for parking in the I-1 district. This was a big discussion last year, and the council did vote to retain the 50-foot setback requirement. It is staff's opinion, as outlined in the staff report, that the variance standards have not been met. There is 76 feet between the fence and the south property line. The 15-foot shift could be accommodated within that area. However, obviously, variance standards, the council has, or planning commission has discretion, and we've provided some comments in our analysis if the council, excuse me, planning commission does find that they're met, that you could use for your findings. The second variance is a request for a 75-foot curb cut with 32 feet is the maximum allowed. This is a public safety issue, and city staff strongly recommends denial of this variance. Both the Public Safety Department, the Public Works Department feel very strongly, as I outlined in the staff report, why this curb cut needs to be minimized. Number of industrial users in the city have requested a larger curb cut, and the city has not allowed a larger curb cut. A standard semi can negotiate a 32-foot curb cut. Nelson Trucking sells and repairs semi tractor trailers. They have a 32-foot curb cut requirement. They did ask for larger, and were not permitted that. The applicant indicates that they have a WB92 truck that occasionally makes deliveries. That's a very rare vehicle to see on the road. It does occur, but it's not the regular delivery, and so Public Safety has said they will allow unloading on the public street upon notification, should that type of vehicle be required. And so the site should be designed for a standard semi truck, which can accommodate the 32-foot curb cut. So staff does not recommend approval of that variance. This probably would have been better if the IT stuff was working, but this was an image that was not in your packet. I wanted to highlight this 15-foot driveway access. There's a 30-foot wide access easement that provides access to this property to the south. It's on this property, and it's on the Ebert property to the east. So the 15-foot piece that's on this property should be restored to turf and kept clear of all encumbrances. This is an access easement that exists today and should be removed. But this pink area underneath it or orange, we really are recommending that the fence be moved to the edge of the parking lot. That will allow the area that's orange here to be made up as purple here, which could then be gravel, which would allow an expansion of the outside storage area, to be fenced here without increasing the impervious surface area and triggering the stormwater rule. So they wouldn't need to do a pond if they did that. I mentioned these two parking stalls would need to be removed, these two and these four in order to meet the 26-foot wide drive aisle, yeah, drive aisle requirement. And then recommending landscaping around the perimeter of the site and relabeling this area here as an unloading zone, not a storage area. This is a public hearing, Mr. Chair, so we recommend that you open the public hearing and take public testimony. The applicant and his engineer are here this evening. Staff does recommend approval of the resolution approving the site plan and interim use permit and denial of the resolution denying the setback variance and a resolution denying the curb cut variance. We acknowledge that variance criteria are open to interpretation. Consequently, the planning commission could reasonably find otherwise or recommend conditions to, and recommend conditions to mitigate the impact of any variance.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Great, thank you. This seems like one of our more technical ones that we've had in a long time. All right, at this point, I'll open this up to the public hearing. Again, for those in the audience that wish to speak on the topic, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and would be glad to take your testimony. And for those that are online, Natalie will give you the appropriate instructions.
Members of the public online, if you'd like to speak on this item, if you are on a computer or mobile device, you should be able to access the raise your hand function under the reactions menu or tab. And if you are joining us by phone to raise your hand, it is star nine. And Mr. Chair, no one is raising their hand at this time.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that's here to speak right now? The applicant and the owner are here, so if we have questions, you'll make yourself available?
Absolutely.
Okay, and you don't have a presentation you'd like to give at this point?
Unless you have any specific questions.
I know that they're most likely going to come up.
That's great.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. This public hearing is now closed. Okay, so let's move on to the commission discussion and recommendation. Does anybody want to start? Yes.
I'll start. So here, I think this application has several issues that will prevent me from supporting complete approval. Essentially, the applicant is looking to correct current code violations with new code violations. I see that there are five parts to this, but the site plan is really informed by the other four parts. So first, the applicant is requesting an interim use permit for outdoor storage. I see that the draft resolution says that the interim permit expires when one of the following occurs, and I'm quoting, A, a violation of conditions under which the permit was issued, and B, the interim use permit allowing parking and outside storage as a principal use related to the business operations at 19925 75th Avenue. The sale of either the property at 19925 75th Avenue or 19950 75th Avenue to a different entity will terminate the IUP. However, the city's code states that the interim, or it states that interim uses are exactly that, temporary and for a quote "brief" period. A requirement for interim use is that there is a quote "date" or event that will terminate the use can be identified with certainty. I'm referring to City Code 1070.030 subdivision 3D. The code also provides, though, like staff's report does, that an IUP can terminate in the event that conditions under which the IUP are issued are violated. I think, though, that this can be misused and that interim permits should not become the norm or allowed to masquerade as a conditional use permit. That issue aside, ultimately, I agree with staff that the request for an IUP for outdoor storage does not comply with the code because of insufficient screening. I think that the condition added for additional screening will carry this part of the request across the line, though. Therefore, I move to, or I would move, to approve the IUP for outdoor storage, subject to the condition that there is additional screening added. Now, the second and third things, though, that West Side Tire is requesting is an IUP for parking and a variance for the parking setback. These two asks are really related, though. I think, like staff notes, that the request for a variance fails because, among other things, the applicant has not shown that there are conditions unique to the parcel that warrant a variance. The snowmobile trail affects the neighboring property, yet somehow they comply with the parking setback requirements. I therefore would move to deny approval of the IUP for parking. I would also move to deny granting a variance for the parking setbacks. The last variance is for the curbing. I see no reason that there is a practical difficulty for West Side when others comply and have the same infrequent tractor-trailer deliveries. I am also concerned that this is inconsistent with others. So I therefore would move to deny granting a variance for the curbing cut. And just as a sidebar, I do note that there is a typo in our city code 1070.20 on conditional uses, sub 2ij. There is a line break where one should not be. Just wanted to point that out to staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lantman. So let me just summarize. You would recommend, let's see, we have three resolutions. So you would agree with, oh, sorry, approval of the resolution approving the site plan and interim use permit, or I don't think that's what I heard.
Yeah, so I would, I would move to approve the IUP for the outdoor storage, subject to the condition that there is additional screening added. And then pretty much everything else.
So you're recommending denial of the setback variance and denial of the curb cut variance?
Correct.
So then, on the resolution, I just want to make sure that I'm up to where you are. So on the approving an interim use permit and site plan application from West Side, as it's written here, what parts of this would you not recommend be included as part of that recommendation?
Well, again, I think the easiest way to describe it is that I recommend approving just the IUP for outdoors storage, subject to the condition that additional screening is added. I am recommending that everything else be denied.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
You have the floor.
So I know that the setback variance for parking was noted as a public safety issue, but the public safety comments just addressed the temporary parking of the larger vehicle on the street. Can you just fill me in? I just don't, like, I'm not sure what the public safety issue related to a setback variance is.
If I said that, I apologize, Commissioner, Mr. Chair. The public safety is concerned about the curb cut.
Okay.
Variance, not the setback. I apologize if I spoke. The idea of minimizing curb cuts minimizes conflicts on a public street.
Right, yeah.
And that's the public safety concern about that larger curb cut. People don't know where vehicles are coming onto the street.
Okay, but the public safety did not have a concern related to the setback?
Correct.
Okay, but the setback, the reason for the denial of the setback recommendation from staff is that others on the street have been able to comply with that, and the intent behind the setback is to just maintain kind of a mono look as you look down the street. That's what I gathered from the staff report, and I just want to make sure I'm not missing something.
Mr. Chair, staff's reason for the denial is we don't believe the variance standards have been met.
Okay.
Or that setback variance.
Thank you for answering. The only other comment I had was just related to the snowmobile trail and the idea that it could be pushed back and trees removed in order to plant other trees, and that seemed kind of a little bit ridiculous to me. So I just thought that if there is a way to just leave the snowmobile trail there and leave the trees alone, then I think that it just felt like it's already there. It was already a thing. So that was one of my only other comments. I'll chime in as other things come up, but I know that's related, then, to maybe perhaps allowing the setback variance.
Yeah, that's because I had that noted too about the, because you, staff had mentioned that the commission could find the snowmobile trail as a unique constraint, so then if that stays, then that was one of the drivers to deny the variance, I think, for the setback.
Yeah, you know, snowmobile trails are kind of a...
Fluid thing.
Very fluid. Every year, it's like re-navigating to get through Corcoran. I'm a snowmobiler. I've been riding around here for 27 years. Here's the thing I see coming in the future. The Parks and Trail Commission and this city in general has done nothing. I mean, we're going to be talking about the northeast district, but is there any provisions for guaranteeing snowmobile trails into that district any more than there is to drive them into here? Mama G's and the stanchion are going to soon be enveloped, completely surrounded by development, residential development and commercial development and everything else. There will be no more destinations eventually in this city. And the use from what, again, this is a segment. This isn't a whole entire trail system. So if they decide that they're going to expand their yard... So, if they decide that they're going to expand their yard because of some reason, they can cancel out that trail. There's no guarantee it'll be there. And there's no guarantee that there will be any real significant traffic ever going through downtown in, say, ten years, because everything's going to be developed. There, there will be nowhere to go. You won't be able to get down here unless they, you know, make the trail right down the ditch. You know, you can, you can always go right down the ditch, the right of the road, but that's a place I don't like to ride personally for, for, you know, for issues, a lot of issues. But I just, I, I think trying to, to, to grant these times, these types of variances is a hardship, because you've got a volunteer snowmobile trail on the property. I, I, I commend their, their willingness to keep it, but I don't find that to be a compelling thing when it's not an adverse condition of the land in and of itself. It's just a competing use for space that you currently don't use.
Sure. I just don't recommend that the city take down any trees in order to maintain the trail in its, like, location.
And I, I think, and I'm, I don't know specifically what they're talking about, but if you move back out, you might only be talking about taking out a couple of trees. You know, I, I mean, I don't know for sure, but, you know, what's more important, keeping the trees or keeping the snowmobile trail? That's a decision for them.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, Mr. Shulak, do you, do you have anything, do you have any questions you got to eat up?
No, I just, I noticed when I went through it, I, I started to label all the areas where they weren't in compliance, and ran out of sticky notes.
Here, I got some right here for you.
And I, I do think highly of West Side Tire and their service to the community, especially the police department. But I wish that this proposal would have arrived with, with fewer things in, in non, fewer things in non-compliance. I'd certainly feel a lot better. It, it just seems like a lot of things right now that are, that are discussable. And, you know, you, you start talking about one, and it has an effect on another and everything. So, I was sort of overwhelmed by the, the lack of completeness or, or whatever in this packet. But I would be in favor of, of some sort of, probably along with what Commissioner Lanterman suggested, or what you suggested, as far as the, the overall, bringing into, well, bringing into compliance also makes me think that with, with this many items, where do you start? You know, I'm, I'm concerned that something that was agreed upon decades ago was allowed to go in, perpetuate into the 2020s. And, and again, I think we're, we're dealing, we've talked about this before. We've had some agreements in the city that have gone on for decades and that have been sort of a wink and a nudge. And then, when it comes time to either bring that up to code, or somebody else coming forward and saying, "Well, you did it for them," you know, and so, but at this point, I just, I would like to consider, consider a motion, not make a motion, about how to resolve this issue.
Okay. All right. I, I, I had a couple of questions, just because I, I couldn't figure it out. And again, I, I just need to understand why. On, on sheet C201, um, I, so, can, can somebody explain to me what the proposed gravel pavement, pavement is? And how is that different than the tuminous? What, what is that?
I would, you know, the applicant's engineer is here, Mr. Chair, I think.
Yeah. Could you help answer that? Yeah, please.
Absolutely. Any technical questions, that's why I'm here.
Give, for the record, your name, please.
My name is Lionel Paul, BA, engineering out of Cleveland.
Yep.
Uh, the gravel pavement, you're talking at the entrance, correct?
Yeah.
So, that area is for, when West Side brings in larger equipment, larger tractor-trailers. If I must speak here, please change me. If they bring in a larger tractor-trailer, let's say with a dozer on it, their jacks are strong enough to lift that trailer up to maintain and work on that trailer itself, right? So, but when they do that, their jacks will end up bending the frame of the trailer itself with the weight of the bulldozer, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, they gotta take that dozer off and back it off the trailer, and then work on the trailer itself. So, they back it down onto that gravel, which wouldn't get marked up, right? If it's a tuminous or asphalt, like parking lot out here, the metal tracks of the dozer would mark up, be up, fair up, the tuminous. So, a way around that is to put down gravel pavement. Gravel pavement, technical term, if you will, no different than the gravel road.
Like, class-five gravel?
Class-five, yeah.
Okay. All right. I get that.
That's what's out there today.
Okay. All right.
Does that help?
It does. Now, on, on the next page, C202. Now, because I am a customer of West Side, I get all my tire work done. They're fantastic organizations. I was looking, I was looking at this, and I see this, this material called "existing gravel pavement" right in front of all the service bays. And I'm like, I've been here way too many times to know that that's not gravel.
That would have showed up from the survey. Are you talking on the north property?
I'm talking on the north property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh...
Why is that a different color than, I mean, if you want to see the drawing?
Yeah. May I add anything else? Or, I mean, we had, may I approach?
I mean, yeah. No, you can't. We're mad. Now, see this right here? So, these are the service bays, and then it's all the way back here.
That would be existing concrete, I believe. And maybe...
It says "existing gravel pavement."
Maybe we have a typo. Maybe that's, forgive me, that could be a typo, unless we don't have existing...
Well, here's the thing. When you look at it from Google Earth, you can see there's an outline here that matches this. And, and so, I don't know if it's a...
You have concrete right outside the service base, correct? Correct. You could have concrete up there.
Concrete, not gravel, then.
Yeah. That could, you're talking in front of the building, that is all concrete.
Yeah, right here?
That's all concrete, yes.
Okay. And then, back here?
That's all. This is all, there's concrete here, but this, and there's concrete here, you have the loading dock doors. That's all concrete.
Okay.
Concrete and concrete.
Okay. Thank you. All right. They, I just was, I couldn't, I couldn't match the description with what I, I reckon, you know, what I remember there. Now, in the, in the north property, the, the street number 19925, the, the shop and all that, more towards the west end, when you look at Google Earth, there's, there's a long building that comes out here. Now, I see that it, it's not shown up on this plan. I know that there's been discussions in the staff report about the square footage, which goes to the issue of how many parking spots. So, could somebody tell me what is, what is that that I see? Because I never go around this side of the building. I, I go, I park here, I go in the office, and they take care of my stuff, and, you know, it's done. But I never go around it. So, I don't know, what is that building that shoots out?
Those are trailers that are used to unload and load them on some bases.
So, they're trailers? It's not a building?
That's correct. There's trailers back up to loading dock doors.
Oh.
And they're in the process of being loaded, unloaded every day.